Good evening. I'll call this regular council meeting in the village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:30 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Ruth Fairparker.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you tonight for this beautiful island. We thank you for the great weather that you've given us this summer. We thank you for the progress that has been made in relation to this group of people. And we pray for wisdom for them. And we pray that you would just continue to open doors for things to take place, Lord. I think even of the things that are happening with the seniors, the good ideas that are coming and flowing. And we just pray that continually, as these people make decisions, that you would put people in their path, that would help them to and encourage them to continue doing their job to the best of their ability. We commit them to you. We thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things for opening remarks tonight. The first one is, last month, I declared conflict of interest, and I took the opportunity to go back in the back room and watch our crew who are producing our broadcasts as we every month. And I have to give a shout out to Jasper, Oscar, and Caleb. They're doing an incredible job back there, and we should probably thank them more than we do. So if any of you declare conflict, I'd highly recommend a visit to the control room. And for anyone who's watching and not here in the room, we actually have no in-room camera operators. We're doing it all remotely by computer, so it's very cool to watch them judge who's going to speak next and move the camera to make sure that it's aiming at whoever it is. It's a good reminder for me to point out who's going to speak next to give them a bit of a heads up. So I just want to give them a shout out because they're very dedicated for coming here every month. The only other thing that I did want to highlight, and many of you were there last week, and appreciate you coming out both on Saturday and then again on Tuesday for the ribbon cutting. Ambulance New Brunswick has stationed a plane here on the island. The plan is the plane will be here full-time from here on out. It may not always be that plane because there are three planes in the fleet, so they will rotate them out depending on maintenance or whatever, but there will be a plane here on the island. So that's certainly a relief to have that plane sitting there and know that we have that security and that link to the mainland in the event of an emergency. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody around the table for their support over this long haul and all the work that you guys have put in. And I thank you again to the Department of Health and Ambulance, New Brunswick, for their efforts on that front as well. So with that, we will move on to number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Nobody wants to go back to the control room? Hearing none. Adoption of the minutes from the August 12th meeting.
I will make a motion to accept those.
Heard the motion from Councillor Told. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councillor Greenlaw. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. For additions to the agenda, I have two things. One would be under new business. It's, we have an email that was circulated, it was on the table, from Meals on Wheels. They're looking for a letter of support. And we have a bill to add as well for the General Operating Fund. Okay? It's for Universal Truck and Trailer for $18,463. Is that 66 cents?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. You heard the motion from Councillor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councillor Valentine. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'm going to take two seconds and finish writing this on my agenda before I forget when we get there. Okay. We have no RCMP again this evening. I think part of that is with the transition and having new members on the island. And we are fortunate that a lot of municipalities don't have RCMP that come to do regular monthly reports. I have reached out to Corporal Henderson, I think I've got the right title. I'm going to have chat with him tomorrow, and hopefully we can set up something between the RCMP and council and have a session and then get back on maybe regular visits here from them. So with that, we'll move on down to the 10-minute open session.
Go.
Yes. So while you're on your way up, I'll speak loudly, right up to the microphone.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder to everyone and to Mr. Russell, open session is an opportunity for citizens to address council. It's 10 minutes in total, but we can't respond to people around the table. So it's simply an opportunity to speak and no response from us. So...
Will this pick me up at this distance?
Yep. You should be okay.
It will? Okay. Yes, I know this is a one-way discussion. Okay. My name is Greg Russell. Well, first, good job on that air, on that plane. Because two years ago, I was the last one out on the old plane. If it hadn't have been for the plane, I wouldn't be talking tonight. My name is Greg Russell. I live at 444 Route 776. At present, I have an excellent water supply by Doug Well. I am concerned how the proposed development next to, in the next lot for me, the garden homes are going to affect my water supply, and I do have some concern for my neighbor's water supply. Oh, I came in and talked to Chris a couple of weeks ago. He knew not very much, official, so he didn't tell me very much. But, so, tonight, I'm here. The Van Horn has a diagram on their website. Since that sign, I signed one up a couple of days ago next to me. But there's, that's, this diagram is on their sign, and that's proposing 31 units in St. Andrews. Now, we set up shop up there about eight years ago. The well driller come in, and he drilled up from where my well is closer to where the proposed development is. He found, he went through about 20 feet of white silt, sand, whatever. I pumped white water for three weeks. He come back and said, "That's it. Game over." He went to another spot on my property and got his drill caught in a rock. He said, "Greg, drill yourself a well." He said, "I know there's water there." We drilled a well, dug well, all kinds of water. In those dry summers, when it gets a little dry, I might go down a foot, maybe. And it's, I think it's four, three-foot tiles. This is my quick notes this afternoon. Okay, I want to, I know you are the last, a group of last decision in our process, which I have no idea what it's about. But I'm officially registering my concern tonight on this date with you people. The village, I'm just going to say the village, because there's other groups in the village that look after things. I don't, I assume some, what I would like is someone from the village to get ahold of me as soon as tomorrow and tell me what process I should go through that my well is protected from, you know, a development and other people's. Tomorrow would be nice. I noticed that the Van Horn one in St. Andrews was approved in something like 1922, or in '22. And I'm making a guess that that development with 31 is on a municipal water supply, which is not what we have here. I won't take the full 10. Please, team, because you're, I know you're last, protect our water supply. There's a lot of us up in Boot Hill, and we want to be very, we love it there, and we want to be, we don't want our water supply damaged or degraded. None of you would want your water supply at home, same thing. Think about where I am. Think if they were doing it beside you. Oh, by the way, I tried to reach St. Andrews all afternoon to confirm their water supply, and I just, they were, just weren't answering today. So, whole fail here from someone tomorrow, and if there's a process, I want to get it started. Right? And, one last thing. Is there any way you guys can keep that five going until December? Because we all know how busy one ferry is in the fall. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I appreciate that. Okay, so now, 11-1 is the Graham and Anne Legion, Stanley Fleet, to talk about the veterans' banners.
Thank you. Always liked coming, you guys. And just a couple of things, the planning information is good, good stuff. And even the little white house there that was, when it was dumped off, don't look, looks a lot better now than what it did. And the, where you have the market there, looks really good. So, kudos. And my efforts here this evening are to do with, I guess, it all started around the banners, the connection to village. And basically, they go up and down, I call it a boom truck, but it's a bucket truck. And cost, so how do you, I guess, address our part? We coordinate that. We supply the men with boom truck, we go down, we do the repairs. There's, when they're up in the wind, there's, they're stored up in North Head, as you guys know, on your property. And we go through them, and so far, we've managed, that's why they're only up for about a three-week period. The day going up this year would be the 21st, but not necessarily, because it's weather permitting. Sometime after that, the day down would be the first good day after Remembrance Day, which is a Monday this year. So Tuesday is a setting day, a lot of traffic, but it might be Wednesday, Thursday, whatever. But roughly a three-week period of time because of the wind there coming and trying to avoid replacement. But it seems to be a really well-liked project. And to talk about our part, the cost there is, is 500 up and 500 down. That's no, that's just the truck. There's no, that's not the man, our men, and that sort of thing. That a day, it's always a full day, and for a couple of guys at least, and a vehicle chasing it, and whatever. But also, a part that the general public don't know about the banners is that they started out at 250 if you wanted to buy one. Now, they're 300. But even at 250, when there, there really wasn't. We subsidized that. It actually happened when the metal, when the price of metal went up, the pandemic. So, actually, a banner's $500. We just, we trying to cap it because we want people to buy them. And I brought my banner chairman with me tonight for little things that might slip up. But I think we're currently at about 102. And we got probably at least five. It looks like, sometimes you have a list there and you're not, not sure of whether, they've just inquired. But it's probably at least five right now to go up. And so, you take the, the cost of the $300, and then you take us subsidizing what it really is, because we buy the metal, and the metal isn't any line. What I'm here for is, this is how we partnered, we had a partnership, and the, the village really helped us get this off the ground. And so, I know that you have to budget or whatever, and I was looking for the cost, the $1,000, currently, 500 up and 500 down. If somehow that that could, that you guys here through council would be interested in putting up where you're a partner with us, that'd be your part. That's my ask. And I don't know if you want questions or if...
Any questions or comments for Stanley? Thank you, by the way.
It's pretty basic. Shall I just leave that with you?
Leave that with us. Do we want to have a discussion about that now, or what's the thoughts? Councillor Turner?
I don't see any reason why not to, really. I would like for us to be able to do that. I don't know what the rules are. Like, is this considered a donation, or do we have somewhere that this can be included, like a budget line or anything? I don't know how that works, but I would love to see us be able to help.
Could work that out, because I understand the budget aspect, too. So whatever you decide. I know you have a thing there, like a $200 thing. And I just want, there's a part on that form that says about, you know, who else have you more or less reached out to? Our part is, we're doing all the other. Okay? That's how, that's how we, I just want to make a couple of things very clear. If we wasn't here today, there wouldn't be a legion, number one. We know that now. And our building probably would have fell down if it hadn't happened, what had happened. And when I made a presentation here, or for a plaque sort of thing from Dominion Canada, and you people got it, I understand there's places here in New Brunswick now that that model has gone out. And so, we can be very proud, I am very proud, that that happened here first. And if you go away and you see on a legion on a municipal, municipal building, okay, it happened first on Graham and Anne. And I think this, I think it's something that spread out. They wanted to use, that's why they used that, and it's gone out, probably right across Dominion, because that came from, the plaque came from Dominion, didn't come from New Brunswick. So, anyway, thank you for listening to me, and it's all good.
Thanks, Stanley. Councillor Green?
Stan, we appreciate you and the other Legion members and what you do for the community and for people in need. Stan and I had a conversation about this a while ago.
Yep.
I don't know how long ago. And my thought was, it's an unbudgeted thing. We do have a policy that $200 is our cap on that. I would suggest that the Legion submit two requests for $200 to help put them up and $200 to help take them down. And we'll honor that fairly quickly, and we'll take a look at the rest of it as we look, we bounce numbers.
And your budget. That's, thank you very much.
Councillor Sturgeon?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as I had discussed a few months ago, everybody knows the cost of everything has gone up. And I would strongly suggest the council, we look at the $200 limit at our next budget time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sturgeon. Councillor Valentine?
Thank you. Stanley, everybody loves the banner project. And I think Philman's idea is a great one. And I think the Rotary Club would like to hear from you. So why don't you talk to your partner?
We came here first because of the season, getting them up and down. There will be a presentation to do with subsidizing the cost, like from three to five, to help us out. That'll be made, that'll be, that's coming up. We came here first because of time, you know, that kind of got, no, sometimes you might get canceled, and so, and then you're down to October's meeting and, you know, this sort of thing. So, that's the choice but that, yeah, we're going to do that, not here. Okay? So that's, that's another reason why it went that way. Are we all happy? Thank you.
Stanley, one more question. Roughly when, you said what, three weeks, you keep them up. When roughly would they come down?
Come down? The first good day after Remembrance Day, but this year, it's the 12th, which is Tuesday, which is a setting day. So it may not be that day, but Wednesday, Thursday, whatever. First day after Remembrance Day. They go up, they'll go up the 21st, the first good day. 21st is a Monday of October. They'll go up Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever, the good weather there. And then they'll come down, like I say, between, probably by Wednesday on, in November there. 11th is Monday, so 12th to 13th.
I'm just thinking, we also use said bucket truck to put up our Christmas lights. I wonder if we can coordinate something that, when we put our Christmas lights up, he just happens to take the banners down.
I wonder, do you know when that is?
We, we could do it. I mean...
What we, you know what?
The treasurer and the clerk would like the Christmas up now.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's just go, you know what I mean? I never, I never presented that. We discussed in executive meeting about this, and we thought maybe we should, they said, maybe you, when you do the presentation, you should just throw the up and down to the village, because the village uses a boom truck. So maybe that, that, maybe that's what you're looking for, and that you might be able to negotiate that other thing with it.
I'm saying, we may be able to cover the down charge with our up charge.
Yep.
So all, so all you'd be responsible for would be putting them up. But if you apply for the $200, as Councillor Green said, for the up charge, you're looking at a charge of $300 for the whole thing.
And I might add, that could be for the 2024 years, since it's unbudgeted, but maybe when we do our budget for 2025, we can just insert the $1,000. But this year, if we could cover 700 of it, we'll say, the 500 through our Christmas lights when they come down, the 200 when you apply to put them up, that, that covers the bulk of it for this year. That's a lot of mad math right there.
You do, you guys do your thing, and we'll, we'll ante up.
Sounds good.
To make it to the, right? I guess.
I think what I'm hearing around the table is, we all want to support this as much as we can without getting ourselves in too much trouble.
Okay.
How's that?
You did a good job. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Stanley. All right. I'm not sure what we've agreed to, but hopefully we can work that out for everybody. Under new business, we're at 14-1, which is the Mill Hill intersection. Councillor Layton to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow councillors. As you know, coming down, coming down the Whistle Road, there's always gravel all over the road. It's been an ongoing issue for a number of years because of the traffic that was up Mill Hill. There's so much gravel that's been on the road. It's, it's beat the road to pieces where you come out of that intersection. All the motorcycles, the cyclists, I've heard from a lot of them, and it's an issue. We go up there and we clean it on a regular basis, but I think my wish would be, we've budgeted $10,000 for just sort of a, I guess, something that wasn't covered into the DTI budget, something that might come up. Well, out of all the issues that we have on our highway, I think that's probably one of the most important issues that should be addressed sooner than later. I've gone to Alan, and I've gotten a quote from him, and it come in around $10,000. I'd like to move ahead and council support me and get that cleaned up. So the intersection is clean. It's the only intersection on Graham and Anne that has gravel over it all the time. And I'd like to get it cleaned up. And it's just, it's a safety hazard at the end of the day. Short and simple.
Councillor Sturgeon?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd just like a little more detail of what he's asking for here.
Okay, well...
So basically, it's like somewhat paving or something for so many feet?
Yep. Pave the intersection that, out of Mill Hill onto Route 776, right at that intersection, just pave that area right there. So all the, all the gravel that comes down that road, it's being pulled by the tires, whatever, and it puts it in the road. And just to pave that a little bit up in there would eliminate the problem.
Approximately, how many feet are we talking about, I guess, Jordy, as well?
Well, Alan done the square feet, but I can't tell you. I think it goes in there around 22 feet, as wide as the road is. So we're, we're over, we're within the right way.
Okay, gotcha.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? CAO?
Just so we're clear, we're only paving the right way. We're not paving the end of a private driveway. So we would go to the edge of, you know, basically 33 feet from the center line of the Whistle Road up Mill Hill.
Anyone else? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with paving the intersection of Mill Hill, Route 776.
You heard the motion from Councillor Layton. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councillor Greenlaw. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-2 is the new airport access road power and line trimming. Councillor Green?
Thank you. Good. Forgot to turn my mic on. Been out to the airport a couple times recently, and being an old telephone guy, I always looking at the wires. And the tree growth there is up around the primary wires. And that's not too bad this time of year. The trees blow, the wire touches the tree limb, and it'll burn it off. But if we have snow and ice on them, when that happens, it'll quite often trip the breaker down the road, and we'll lose power at the airport. And I would like for us to contact MB Power either by letter or phone and suggest they get that section trimmed out prior to the winter season.
Questions or comments? Are we all okay with sending that letter?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. Councillor Green?
I have a motion for that.
We're okay. Yep. Okay. 14-3, I just saw your hand reaching, is what I thought was, yeah, is Meals on Wheels. There is an email here that I will skim through. Further to our visit on Friday, August 23rd, regarding the Meals on Wheels program, we discuss the pressing need to assist seniors in our community with online banking. This is an essential service that we believe will greatly enhance the independence and financial security of seniors. We are currently applying for a grant through the New Horizons for Seniors Program, which is, if successful, will be awarded May 2025. However, recognizing the immediate need, we are also working with a grant writer to explore additional funding opportunities that might allow us to start this program sooner. Our goal is to hire a bonded employee who could assist seniors with their banking needs three times a month. Additionally, we aim to purchase a computer to facilitate these services. We greatly appreciate the town's kind offer to provide space at the town office for this initiative. To strengthen our application, we'd like to request a letter of support from the Graham and Anne Village Council. Your endorsement would add significant weight to our grant application and help us demonstrate the community's commitment to this much-needed service. This request is, is time-sensitive, as the application is due the 12th of September. Due to my work commitments, I would really like to send the letter Wednesday, the 11th of September afternoon. Warm regards, Emma Keach, Senior Resource Coordinator from the Charlotte County Seniors Resource Center. I missed the meeting with her on the 24th, but I understand it was a good meeting for those of you who were here. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments on this, or how people feel about sending a letter of support.
I think we shouldn't send a letter of support to help them out, anything to help the seniors out.
I totally agree.
You need a motion?
Why don't you do that?
Make a motion that we'd send a letter of support for the Charlotte County Senior Resource Center.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councillor Valentine. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay, moving along. So approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. Island Home Hardware, the July-August statement, and that is for $12,249. And Universal Truck and Trailer for $18,463. And Universal Truck and Trailer for eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. And that looks like the trailer for the transfer station.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to pay these invoices of the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Turner, question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Next up is closed session, where we have five items. We have property, potential acquisition, we have personnel for maintenance, property for the airport hangar, financial, public works, and property at Alexandria Park. Given the number of things we have in closed session, I'm just going to suggest that we let our camera crew go, and then we will post, the minutes will be available after the fact, and anybody who's here can come back in once we're done. But I think it's going to be a more lengthy discussion than some of our other closed session items. So if that's okay with the wishes of the group, I'll look for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Heard the motion for Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Ballantyne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried.